Third reading?
Yes.
Second.
No.
Wait.
Second?
No, it's the third reading.
This is the third reading. By title only?
To read by title only. No.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Five one.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd like to approve ordinance number 2147 on its third reading.
Sir, we need to read the title.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oops. Tired.
Thank you guys so much.
We're still gonna waste-
Still gotta waste-
I know, I just-
Might as well get comfortable.
I just wanted to tell you, thank you.
Ordinance number 2147 in ordinance authorizing the city council pursuant to chapter 12.08.01E of the municipal code of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property commonly known as parts of McKeon Street.
I'd like to approve ordinance number 2147 on its third reading.
Second.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Six zero. Emergency clause?
I'd move to read the emergency clause.
Second.
Voice vote? You're gonna read it first? Okay.
Well, clarification, I guess. Are you approving it or just reading it?
Oh, I moved to approve. I apologize for my inattention. It's late in the evening. Move to approve.
Approve and read.
Emergency clause, okay.
So that will take then a roll call.
Okay.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Five one. Emergency clause, section four, whereas time is of the essence due to the petitioner's need for title clarification regarding existing retaining wall, and in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and upon affixing the signature of the city clerk, mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd like to assign this ordinance, the second one we have in our file, a number and place it on its first reading.
Mr. Weaver?
Not to be a nitpicker, but technically you need a signature from Madam Clerk and Mr. Ma- and the mayor.
I'll wait. That's what you're here for, is to pick nits.
Yeah, I'll correct that.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd move to place or to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
It'd be number 2148.
Okay. Yes, sir.
One clarification. Before this is read, does the item on the back page need to be arrived at, or is it read now?
For discussion, it needs to be probably needs to be read.
Okay. Ordinance. Oh, okay. Roll call.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay. In ordinance vacating portions of McKeon Street, whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the petition of the adjoining landowner James McAvoy to vacate the area defined by the following legal descriptions. Survey description, a part of McKeon Street abutting Block 122 in the Raleigh and Armstrong survey of the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, and being more particularly described as follows, commencing at the easternmost corner of said Block 122 at the intersection of Hartman Street and McKeon Street, a found rebar pin shown on survey filed on record in survey plat- cabinet D, slide nine, thence along the north right of way of McKeon Street, south eighty-two, and I've never read any of these, so help me out here, eighty-two degrees, forty-one minutes, forty-nine feet, inch-
Seconds.
Seconds, okay, okay, good, got it. Uh, west forty-one point eight zero feet, is that correct?
Yep.
To the point of the beginning.
Yes.
Thence leaving said right of way, south twenty-three, okay, degrees, twenty-two minutes, zero, zero, seconds, is that correct? West one point six five feet, and south sixty-eight degrees, twenty-two minutes and zero, zero, seconds, west thirty-three point three seven feet, to the northwesterly right of way thereof, thence along said right of way, north thirty-two degrees, twenty-two minutes, forty-one seconds.
Thirty-nine degrees.
Thirty-nine, okay, you're correct. Uh, we read it, uh, north thirty-nine degrees, twenty-two feet, twenty-two minutes, forty-one seconds, east fourteen point eleven feet, and thence along the north right of way thereof, north eighty-two degrees, forty-one minutes, forty-nine seconds, east twenty-two point nine one feet, to the point of beginning containing zero point zero zero three acre or one three zero point three square feet, bearings determined from survey filed on record in survey plat- cabinet D, slide nine, in the Carroll County Circuit Clerk's records. Not all easements affected this property may be shown except by special request. This is a property boundary description, property owner may contact local utility authorities for the location of existing utilities or easements right of ways. And whereas section fourteen dash forty, I'm sorry, and whereas section fourteen dash fifty-four dash one oh four two of the Arkansas Code annotated allows the city council to vacate certain streets, now therefore, with a space between therefore and be, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, that the sections described above are hereby vacated, and title is hereby vested in fee simple in the adjoining landowner James McAvoy for the sum of blank.
One dollar?
Me and five. Just kidding.
Y'all's call.
One dollar.
One dollar, okay. Is that unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a motion to be one dollar?
Move-
It needs to be.
Move for the amount to be one dollar.
Is that all in favor of the amount being one dollar?
Aye.
Okay. There you go. I'll let you mark that on here. It'll be in your handwriting. Okay. Mr. DeVito?
I would move to approve ordinance number 2148 on its first reading.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Six zero.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2148 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance number 2148 in ordinance vacating portions of McKeon Street, where at?
Mr. DeVito?
I'd like to approve ordinance number 2148 on its second reading.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. DeVito?
I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2148 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
This has to be a roll call.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Five one.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd like to approve ordinance number 2148 on its third reading.
Second.
Mr. Weaver? I think she did, whereas.
Did she read? I think she read it for the third, or for the second.
Okay, not the third, I don't think.
Did she read it for the third?
No.
It's getting late, maybe I missed it.
I don't think so.
The last vote was to suspend the rules and no, the title was not read.
So we need to read the title, and then take the motion.
Ordinance number 2148 in ordinance vacating portions of McKeon Street. Now James' approval on the third reading.
Mr. Weaver?
Uh, move to approve ordinance number 2148 on its third reading.
Second.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Six zero.
Then another one dollar?
There is no emergency clause as it was drafted. If you want it to take effect immediately, uh, the emergency clause that exists on the last ordinance, uh, should suffice also for this if you want to attach it and add it to this.
Mr. DeVito?
I would so move.
Second.
Do we read it first?
Um, yes.
Read and approve.
Yeah, it's section two.
Yeah, it'd be section two as opposed to section four.
Good aye.
Roll call.
You are correct, thank you.
They're getting punchy.
Yeah.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Five one. Okay. Section two, whereas time is of the essence due to the petitioner's need for title clarification regarding existing retaining wall, and in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and by affixing the signature of the city clerk and mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
You are done.
Thank you so much.
Get your dollars. Show me the money.
Yeah, show me the money. Do we need to sign this one now?
Uh, we'll need to attach that emergency clause to it first before we do, and, uh, then there'll be, there'll have to be a deed also.
Okay. Pownell? Yes, sir, you can. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take a second. It's on. Number three and four were combined for discussion, and the first, number three is Joe Gunnell's tour application for the franchise, and number four is, uh, Making Memories or James, Jim Varner's tours. This is number four, the second part of, Mr. DeVito?
Yes, I would move to approve the application for group tour franchise by Edward Joe Gunnell's.
Second.
Ms. Balance?
I just received both of these applications. I would move to table this until the next meeting. Withdrawn a second.
Okay, I didn't hear you second the first time, so I'm sorry. Okay. So now there's no, no motion on the table to withdraw?
Well, go fishing for another second.
Do what?
I, I made a motion, correct, and he withdrew his second? Is that what just happened?
Yes.
Uh, we're not allowed to ask for seconds, only he's allowed to ask for seconds.
Now, why do you do that?
Because you do it to me.
Well, that's because I'm trying to take care of business here. You're not, okay? And Mr. Pownell, I'll take care of it, sir. Okay? I don't need your help. You're welcome. Now, Mr. DeVito?
Okay, I'll restate my motion, uh, to approve the application for a group tour franchise for Edward Joe Gunnell's.
Second.
Motion, nine second, and now there's discussion. Ms. Balance?
I just, I just received these applications, so I would move to table this until our next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, any further discussion? All in favor of table until the next meeting?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call then.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
No.
Mr. Pownell?
No.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Three yeses, three no.
I can't vote.
So it fails.
Vote.
Said I can't vote.
Okay.
So?
So we've got back to the original.
We're back to the original. Okay.
The motion failed.
It was three and three. I can't vote, no.
So it failed?
It failed.
Failed.
The motion to postpone failed.
Okay, now we're back to the original. Mr. DeVito?
Okay, uh, Mr. Gunnell's was one of the original franchisees. Uh, he's conducted his services, he's stayed the course, he's been in business all these many years. Uh, there is no reason to deny him his application. Uh, I've received nothing but, uh, good comments on the tours he conducts, uh, so I see no reason why we should deny his application at this time.
Any further discussion? No further, all in favor of?
Give her a roll call, 'cause that's the final.
Okay.
Ms. Balance?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Five zero one.
Second issue is Mr. Jim Varner's Making Memory Tours? Mr. Pownell?
I make a motion, we only have one tour, step on tour franchise this time with no detriment to the applicant.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeVito?
I, I think during the course of, uh, discussion of this franchise, the council agreed that we would let one franchise unless there was, uh, reason, uh, as to, uh, an increase in business to let the second franchise, and at this time, there's no evidence supporting our releasing the second franchise.
Mr. Berry?
Well, you know, I, I kind of disagree with, with Mr. DeVito. It seemed like we got an email, and I don't find it, uh, here, from our transit director, who recommended that we go ahead and have another, um, franchise, uh, person. Uh, see, Mr. Pownell has one, give it to me. Um, and, uh, he recommended that we would select two franchises, uh, and I, I have to agree with his rationale, with Smitty's rationale. Uh, while I haven't heard really anything negative about Mr. Gunnell's, I have heard that there is, uh, there's, uh, there wish there was another franchise, another operator in town, and I think this would, would do that, uh, because I don't think we, uh, I think having two operators promoting Eureka Springs is only going to be good for Eureka Springs, uh, and so I'm, think that we should go ahead and allow this guy to have a franchise.
Mr. DeVito?
Might I remind council, in Mr. Varner's own words, that he was to run a hillbilly style, uh, which really does not fit in with our franchise conditions, so if that's what Mr. Varner intends to do, he would be in violation of our, our guidelines for our franchisees.
Can we let Mr. Varner address that?
Uh, let me sit there, if you don't mind. Okay, during the, uh, application that I submitted to y'all, I, I tried to clarify that, and I, I didn't communicate clearly that night, um, during our discussion, it kind of got off track, and I'm not really from here with this kind of environment, so I apologize. The, uh, the Homer out house character was in play, has been in play for over a year long before the franchise. There's no intentions of, of using the hillbilly character to do guided tours throughout the, the city. I, he's too high energy, it just won't work, so I have no intentions, and really never did, it just didn't get communicated well. Uh, the reason I didn't really elaborate, here's, here's the character's intentions. Whenever we bring guided groups in, two, I mean, let me, uh, back up. When we bring groups into Eureka Springs, outside, um, at a couple of different locations, there's just two main flows of traffic that come in here for the motor coaches, several miles away from Eureka Springs, uh, we come up with the, kind of the hitchhiker thing. Now, without bogging down into all the logistics of the way this works, uh, the Homer or Henrietta, there's some other characters to take my place when I'm not doing this character, we pull the coach over, uh, again, without bogging down into logistics, jump on and introduce yourselves, we have skit, we have fun, make folks laugh, uh, in, and I'm dressed up like a hillbilly. This is nothing disparaging against Eureka Springs, the character doesn't live there, he's just hitchhiking in, and then what we do is, as the character, as we get to the hotel, it's already pre-set up, that my clothes is already there at the side, so I jump off. Group tours are accustomed to staying on the coach until they get their keys. So I jump off, I've got about ninety seconds, um, put my, my tour guide clothes on, and come out and address in the professional, uh, deal. It's just kind of a way to mix things up. He like, he's in character about ten minutes, and then there's another place or two, depending on what tour they purchase, whether he pops up again unexpectedly, unexpectedly. As far as the downtown historic city tours, it just doesn't fit. He's too high energy, and you can't communicate, but I, and I apologize, I, I wrote that out in the, in the printout that you all got, I tried to elaborate, uh, what his true intentions are. He's been marketing since, well, that's what started me getting people signed up, it was that energy back last summer. So I, is there any questions that I can help elaborate on? The, the city tours, the eleven, the one o'clock and three o'clock's will be done in accordance with Smitty, we've bounced around ideas, it's not going to be character-driven. Uh, this, this Homer is, he's coming into town, he's, he's onstage for ten or fifteen minutes, and then he disappears, so, um, that's the point, it's just to kind of mix things up, and, and that's what has been, uh, appealing to some folks. I had, the franchise opportunity just has evolved since first of November, and I, my brochures, I've been all over the East Coast talking about him, because, so, so the franchise, really, whether we get the franchise or not, he's still in play, um, so, but again, it's nothing against, I mean, it's not a negative comedy, he's, and I don't really know how else to elaborate on that. One thing about my groups that I want to share with you all, that, one of the great things about group tours is it's highly leveraged. That means you get one person, you have a relationship, they bring a group of people in. One of the worst things about group tours is it's highly leveraged. Uh, you got one person. Now, I'm going to be, uh, nothing against Joe, nothing against Joe at all, but Joe's my competition, and I'm not going to have Joe on my coach, or, or in the tram with, with, with just one person. I mean, he, I respect the guy, he's, uh, he's good at what he does, or he wouldn't be doing it, so I'm not going to interact my clients with him in a downtown city tour, so we'll be bringing people in to the city, but we won't be able to bring them into the historic tour, we'll have to kind of market away from it, because I can't provide that service. Um, it kind of ties our hands, and I, I feel like me and Joe's not on a level playing field. We're both marketing, trying to bring people into the city, and, and by allowing me a franchise, I can, I can, now Joe's got three decades worth of experience, and I can't compete with that, I'll never be able to catch up with him. with that, I'll never be able to catch up with him. But I've got different energy, I can take care of my customers, but the reason, what I'm asking for the council is just the opportunity to kind of stay on a level playing field with him. Because the advantages to Eureka Springs is the folks that I do bring in, whether it's two trips, 20 or 200, I, they won't get to experience the Crescent or the Downtown. We'll offer them trolley options, and use, you know, a portion of them will come down, but it's not going to be the same for the businesses of downtown Eureka Springs and the restaurants, the way we just built itinerary.
Well, you have access to...
Mr. DeVito.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I thought he's... You do have access to the Crescent Hotel, you'll only have to book a meal there on your bus, you can transit to the Crescent Hotel and back.
If I book a meal.
You can also park your bus right here, and experience the Downtown. So you do have access to the Crescent, you do have access to the Downtown.
But from a marketing standpoint, if I was Joe, I would strongly consider putting on my website, you know, I'm the only guy that can do downtown historic tours, and from a group leader throughout the US, that's an advantage that I personally don't see why both of us couldn't benefit Eureka Springs. So that's just my point of view. Is there any other questions that I can hopefully communicate?
Mr. Weaver.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
I would caution council in the way that they're framing some of the discussion right now. The issue right now that allows you to either grant or deny a second franchise is the ordinance that you passed characterizing whether it's necessary. You need to be discussing, is it necessary or not? Not what that particular franchise, if a second one is granted, may do or not do, or how it may market itself. You really are bound to either decide there is an economic need or not an economic need at this point.
Mr. Pownell.
And I think that's the motion you have on the table, honestly.
Mr. Pownell.
Looking at the figures that were provided, and going back and referencing for Mr. Berry's benefit due to absence from the special meeting, I do feel that there was actions taken regarding this, that at this point in time, one group tour franchise, until tour numbers increase, would be all we would be addressing. My concern contradicting actions discussed at the special meeting.
Who determines that? Who determines that if there's enough business for him to come in? I'm curious. Is it Mr. Gunnels? Is it us? Is it who? Smitty? Mr. Berry.
Well, again, it's, I recognize, I read the minutes of the special meeting, and, you know, my whole issue is that, I mean, it's just my opinion, but I think there is, I know the bus, or the marketing for buses, in fact, right now, this week, we, the CAPC has gone down to Dallas for ABA, which is American Bus Association. They're going to have about 5,000 people down there that just do nothing but sell buses and tours and tour franchise holders, like Mr. Varner. When I read Mr. Gunnels, what he had done, and I know he markets up in Branson also, and you might say Branson is a competition of ours. And so, you know, I could see it very easily where somebody could say, well, he markets more in Branson than he does in Eureka, although I really wouldn't want to say that, because I've known Mr. Gunnels basically all my life, since we're both born and raised around here. So I'm sure, you know, that he does market Eureka Springs as much as he markets Branson. But I think having another tour operator in town would do nothing but benefit Eureka Springs, and so that's the reason I suggested being in favor of this. I know Mr. Gunnels jumped on Mr. Varner when he was talking about dressing up as a hillbilly, and took offense at it. Well, I had to laugh at it in a way, because my grandparents played in the hillbillies down in the Basin Park for, I don't know, 20 years, probably, every night, five nights a week down there. And so, you know, they didn't seem to think anything about dressing up as hillbillies, and we're talking about the Bergdorf's and the Harps and all those people. So, you know, that's just part of the persona that Eureka Springs and the Ozarks have sometimes. We've got a lot of different personas, we're also a little Switzerland of the Ozarks, and we both know, and most of us know, that we've got nothing to do with Switzerland. It's just another marketing tool. So I think with our franchise ordinance that we've established, and established that, you know, the codes and the lessons, I mean, not the lessons, but the classes that they have to go through, I think Mr. Varner would do well in representing Eureka Springs, and so I would support this application.
Mr. DeVito.
For expediency's sake and to move this thing along, because we're late in the evening with more things on the agenda, I will move to approve the franchise application by Jerry Varner.
Second.
You already have a motion on the table, unless you withdraw it. What was the motion? To only grant one at this time, I believe. Madam Clerk can give us the exact wording.
That is correct. Was there a second on that?
I believe there was.
Yes, there was.
Okay.
Okay, I'll call the question.
Who was the second?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Who's second, Mr. Pownell's?
I did.
You did? Okay.
I'll call the question.
Okay, Mr. DeVito is, well, which one takes precedence, the call for the question or the first motion?
No second on the call for the question.
In the second, yeah.
Yeah, there's no second on it.
I'll second that.
Okay, so now, proceed.
Take a vote on whether to call the question, and then...
Okay.
If it goes to...
All in favor of calling the question? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
It's procedural, it should really be by roll call.
Okay. Learn by doing.
Mr. Berry.
Hi. Talking about calling for the...
Calling the question, sir.
Calling for the question, yeah.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mr. Pownell.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
No.
Five one.
Okay, question is by Mr. DeVito to accept...
No, it's Mr. Pownell's.
Oh, Pownell's, okay. Okay. That's right, for the one. Kind of loose-legged here, too. All right, the original motion is to accept only one franchise, and there was a second? We need a roll call on this one? Okay, roll call it also.
Ms. Balance.
No.
Mr. Pownell.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
No.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick.
No.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Three and three.
Okay. Please, it's me again, didn't it? I'm in favor of letting Mr. Varner have his franchise.
So you won't vote?
Can you vote in the positive?
No.
No.
The motion.
Yeah, I can't vote for, or...
Can I make a motion? Will you give Mr. Varner his franchise?
At this point, you would be back to that point, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to award Mr. Varner his application for a franchise, or his franchise. Made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Roll call, vote again.
Go roll call.
Okay. We'll let you catch it.
Dr. Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
What was the motion?
No.
Mr. Pownell.
No.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
Yes.
Mr. Raphael.
No.
Three and three?
Three and three? Yes. Mr. DeVito.
Congratulations. Could I move at this point that we determine which of the remaining agenda items are imperative that we get through them tonight and delay the other ones till the next meeting?
Okay. We could probably postpone number seven, destruction of 2006 records.
Postpone, I'm sorry.
Number seven? Yes.
Postpone six, as long as we can go ahead and maybe set up a date through the mayor's office or the city clerk's office.
Find that.
Number nine?
Expiration, what time?
Probably need to do that.
No, that's already expired.
Okay.
Number eight?
What's your take on that one? That's the one you sent to me, the B&amp;B license fee ordinance? I don't think we even have that one yet, do we?
We don't have one, because we don't know, I don't know what the council may want to draft that one.
Postpone it?
So it's, yeah, it's just more of a discussion to figure out whether we need what we need.
Okay, postpone number eight?
I would move to postpone number 10, since I'm one of the sponsors.
Yeah.
There's a, we need a second these?
I think there's general agreement.
General discussion, okay.
Do it at the end with a vote.
Number 10. Send a workshop for review of animal-drawn vehicle requirements?
Same as the...
Let's schedule for February. Anyway. Okay.
Date to be determined, compatible with everybody?
Do you want to do that at the next meeting, set the date, or do you want to postpone this one?
Set it at the next meeting.
They're not going to be here, they said they're going to be gone. Is that correct? In February?
We'll be gone the first week, but if your meeting in February is going to be on the second Monday, we'll be here.
Okay. Postpone?
Postpone.
All right.
So that leaves us with nine, 12, and 13.
Okay. Well, the contract's signed on 13, so... The resolution for y'all to approve or disapprove?
We don't have that resolution anyway, do we?
Yeah, you do.
Can it wait until the February meeting?
It's a resolution, the contract's signed. We have a contract with the county. So you want to postpone it?
Please.
You go, Doc.
Postpone pro tempore discussion.
Water rates?
Yes, we have to, we have to do number 12.
Okay, so we got...
It's imperative that we do number 12.
Nine and 12.
15, I'll just go ahead and appoint Mr. Berry, pro tempore.
Second.
Excuse me.
Point of order.
Point of order.
What?
Recent legislative action changed that to the point where the city clerk, in the known absence of the mayor, or someone appointed for any long term, I feel that the intent and the people that I've talked with, that the pro temp action is done, should be done at the table whenever council sits down and all of a sudden realizes the mayor isn't there, and then you vote for a mayor pro temp at that time for one meeting only.
Mr. Weaver, what's your take on it, sir?
From what I've read and what I've seen at this point, I think the mayor still has a say in who, and what your concurrence was, just now that the table determines it when it sits down, the mayor wouldn't have a say in it. So I don't know that they're, you're right, it talks about long term.
I would move to postpone this.
Second.
Okay.
The municipal league is meeting next week, they may have a better take on this, probably will.
Ms. Balance.
Since they came up with this legislation that got approved, I think.
When we look at 1443 501, organization of city council, we look down at two, and it says, "In the absence of the mayor, in the absence of the mayor, the city council shall elect a president pro tempere." In the absence of the mayor, so that means when the mayor is not here, that doesn't mean now, so the mayor can have a say on who he gets to be. It says, "In the absence of the mayor, the city council shall elect a president pro temp."
For that meeting.
That's what state statute says.
I believe that was superseded by the last legislature.
I don't believe it was.
You need to postpone.
There's a motion to...
Okay. Motion made to postpone, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Second.
Aye.
Parker seconded.
Thank you.
It's another hard decision to make.
So, we have...
All right.
What was the vote then?
To postpone.
How many?
Who voted aye to postpone, everybody?
I voted aye.
Six, zero?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Gunnels. All right, actually, we need to get started on number 12, if that's not an issue, because the number nine, secondary, it's no big deal, but 12, we have to address.
What? What? I disagree. Number nine, we probably do need to deal with.
Yes.
Well, I'm saying we need to deal with number 12 now, because it's going to be lengthy discussion. But your call, I'm just telling you, we have to deal with number 12.
Let's vote on it.
Mr. DeVito.
I would move with respects to the finance director, who's sitting here patiently while we debate this, that we move item 12 ahead of item nine.
Is there a second? Is that you, Mr. Parker, or Mr. Raphael? Okay. Made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Lonny, you got the floor. A motion to discuss, let's start with that.
So moved.
Okay. You should have an ordinance in your packet.
Essentially, what you have is the ordinance that was passed last January to increase the water rates, and we have the authority to do this, and we're proposing a 3%, which is the maximum. It's based on the Southern Urban Consumer Price Index, and this is for cities under 50,000. And the price index, CPI, was 4.2%. And so, we can, I say we, you, the council, can increase it more than the 3%, but we can do the 3% without any further action, other than just amending the ordinance that was already in place, which you have a copy of, if anybody wants to see and verify that the Consumer Price Index was 4.2%, I have the documentation here. The reason for this is that we are, according to our last audit, we are out of compliance with the bond, the bonding companies, our agreement with them, and we're at only 92% of net revenue over the principal and interest payments for the two bond issues that we have outstanding. So we're supposed to have, according to the agreement, 120% of net revenue, and so that's why we're proposing this 3% increase at this time. And it will be, the first bill, if we do this, the first bill will come out and... And it will be the first bill, if we do this, the first bill will come out in February. And essentially, the total that will be raised by this 3% will be about $18,000 and over the course of a year. And so the increases, well, the ordinance that you have shows what the, what it will be. If you want to make a comparison to the previous ordinance, I have a copy of that if you'd like to go over those rates.
Could you, just for the record, go over those rates, what, what the previous rates were?
Okay, for inside the city limits, the first 2,000 gallons of water consumption was $9.90. For the next 6,000 gallons was $3.68 per-
360?
368 per 1,000 gallons. And for all water consumption in excess of 8,000 gallons per month, it was 509 per gallon. Per 1,000 gallons, excuse me. Not per gallon. Sorry.
100 dollars a gallon.
And then outside the city limits, for the first 2,000 gallons, which these are the minimums, $19.80. Then the next 6,000 gallons of water was 736 per 1,000 gallon. And then on the, in excess of 8,000 gallons per month, it's $10.18 per 1,000 gallons. So-